Morning. Welcome to the June seventeenth regular session of Board Supervisors Meeting. Roll call please with show notes.
Kurt and Buck.
Here.
Leyland.
Here.
Grant.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Paul.
Here. Please join me on the silence to reflect on this morning's actions. Please stand if you're ready to join in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in this law, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one, agenda received as opposed or amended.
So.
Second. Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item two, public comments. This is a moment reserved for anyone who wishes to address the board on an issue that is not on today's agenda. Room are online. Item three, proclamations. Probably we doing these as two separate proclamations?
Yes.
So we go. We'll take the first, June as Pride Month.
Alright. I'm gonna read this one. This is a proclamation recognizing June as Pride Month. Whereas Blackhawk County is a welcoming community that values fairness, civility, and respect for all individuals. And whereas our nation's founding principles include the belief that every person has the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas Blackhawk County includes individuals of many backgrounds, experiences, and perspectives, including members of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community. And whereas we recognize the positive contributions of the LGBTQ plus individuals to the cultural, economic, civic, and social life of our county. And whereas we recognize that June is a month when many reflect on the history, resilience, and ongoing efforts of the LGBTQ plus community, including the significance of the events such as the nineteen sixty-nine Stonewall uprising. And whereas Blackhawk County recognizes that members of the LGBTQ plus community are feeling increasingly vulnerable in their everyday lives. And whereas Blackhawk County reaffirms its commitment to treating all residents with dignity and respect. Now therefore, we, now therefore, we, the Blackhawk County Board Supervisors, do hereby complain, proclaim the month of June as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in Blackhawk County, encouraging all residents to recognize the humanity of our neighbors and support community where everyone feels safe, valued, and seen.
We have a motion or discussion on proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Do we need roll call? All in favor?
Aye.
And then also, June as June teeth, proclamation celebrating the June teeth holiday.
I will read the proclamation recognizing the Juneteenth holiday. Whereas the United States was founded on the principle that all people are created equal and are entitled to freedom and justice. And whereas on June nineteenth eighteen sixty-five, more than two years after the Emancipation Proclamation was issued, Union troops arrived in Galveston, Texas to enforce the end of slavery, freeing the last enslaved people in the Confederacy. And whereas this day became known as Juneteenth, a time to honor the end of slavery in the United States and to celebrate African-American history, resilience, and achievement. And whereas Juneteenth has been commemorated for over a hundred and fifty years and is now recognized as a federal, state, and Blackhawk County holiday. And whereas we recognize that many continue to reflect on the legacy of slavery and the ongoing pursuit of equity and belonging in American life. And whereas Blackhawk County is home to the highest proportion of black residents in Iowa and has a longstanding tradition of celebrating Juneteenth through community-led events and education. And whereas Blackhawk County recognizes Juneteenth as a time for staff and the broader community to celebrate freedom, reflect on our nation's history, and continue working toward the promise of liberty and equality for all. Whereas twenty twenty-five marks thirty years of Juneteenth celebrations in Blackhawk County, including this year's celebration that will be held June twenty-first through the twenty-second at Sullivan Park in Waterloo and other community gatherings across the county. Now therefore, the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim its continued observance of Juneteenth as a county holiday on June nineteenth and invites all residents to honor its meaning through learning, reflection, and participation in community celebrations.
So moved.
I'm Gaby Whit, Marketing Coordinator. Blackhawk County will have a table at this local Juneteenth celebration, and I did want to introduce Latanya Graves to talk about the thirty years of celebration. She's the president, as you know, of NAACP and the Secretary slash Events Organizer for Social Action Incorporated, but has been our fearless leader through local Juneteenth celebrations for the whole thirty years, actually. Or March. So I will let, not more. But I will let Latanya come up and talk about the local celebration that's happening this weekend.
Good morning. So we're going to kick it off with a men's forum on Thursday, June nineteenth. Men engaged now, and that's going to be at Impact Church of Hope, seven ten Broadway Street from six to eight P M. There's a number of awesome men from the community and some that live out of state that will be speaking to everyone that attends in regards to men being engaged in their families and their communities, starting businesses, the criminal justice system, and a number of other topics. And then on Saturday, 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 woo, Saturday, can't wait until it gets here. We're going to start off with a Freedom Walk that will begin at Ferguson Field at noon, and they will walk to Sullivan Park. And then once everyone arrives at Sullivan Park, the Crusaders Drill Team will kick the Juneteenth events off. They're awesome. They participate in everything. And I believe they only missed celebrating two Juneteens with us. So last year they were recognized for that. And then also Impact, a youth basketball organization. They have always participated as well, and they were recognized last year. And so we'll have vendors, food vendors, clothing vendors, jewelry vendors, kids obstacle course that I used to be over, and I had some awesome obstacle games that they played, but I'm backing off of that. Backing off of that. But the kids obstacle course, Bounce Houses, a clown doing face painting, a stilt walker, entertainment, poetry, choirs, two bands, D H and the Next Level Band from Milwaukee, and then Hart Smith featuring Felicia Smith-Noss. And so that's from one to eight. And then on Sunday, 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 the events will start at two P M. We'll have a softball game. We're gonna recognize black businesses that have been in existence for thirty-plus years, marriages, friendships, everything thirty. So if you've been involved in something for thirty years, you're going to be recognized. And then we'll also have poets, praise dancers, choirs, and that will wrap it up. Any questions?
No questions. It just feels like it's getting bigger even every year. Last year was really amazing, and so looking forward to it. So thank you for all the, all the work that you put into it.
Thank you.
Latanya, one, the church, that's Cogger Broadway, that the one?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes, yes.
And then what's the hours at Sullivan Park?
On Saturday, one to eight.
One to eight.
And then on Sunday, two to seven.
Thank you.
And you're all invited to attend. You will enjoy it.
I'll be there.
And then we also, I want to say this, we also recognize or, or do a memorial of all victims that lost their life to a senseless act of violence. In the past, Dr. Belinda Craven-Smith and Marvin Jenkins read the names, but they will both be on some other ventures, but those names will still be read. And we do that every year just to show that we haven't forgotten. And some of them are unsolved murders. So we still want to remember those that lost their lives to an act of violence in our communities. Any questions?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. And I'm off because I have a lot to do.
So we've got a motion and a second on the proclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in same sound. Motion carries. Let's do some photos.
We'll do the Juneteenth photo first. You go in there, and then I'll have you step out, and that'll be the time. Back, and you guys come step forward a little bit. There you go. There we go. One, two, three, one, two, three. Very good. Thank you. See you Saturday. Wait, we'll do one for Pride. Or for Pride Month. Everybody step this way. To the, to the more, as an art, just a little bit. No, sorry. There we go. One, two. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh-oh.
Alright. Next up is item four, Claims and Payments as a Resolution of the Board of Supervisors Approve its Spentitures and that the county auditor be authorized direct to issue payments against the period of settlements of such claims as. So moved.
Second.
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payment today is one million, two hundred fifty-three thousand, seven hundred seventy-five dollars and twenty-six cents. And out of that, we are paying two thousand, eight hundred forty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents from the sixty-fourty fund. We are paying for certain capital items today. The V A building to Peters Construction, a hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred eight dollars and eighteen cents. And let's see. Secondary roads again. This is typical this time of year. We're paying for lots of rock, about seventy-five thousand total payments for rock. Even quality works, we are paying twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars to refinish the jail kitchen floor. And out of the ARPA fund, we are paying Taylor Construction fifty-six thousand, six hundred eighty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents for the nature trail. And also paying Peters, the public health part of the construction at Pinecrest, two hundred ninety-two thousand, five hundred three dollars and forty-seven cents. We also have a large payment to Wheeler Lumber out of the local, local option fund for bridge decking, a hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred thirty-eight dollars and twelve cents. And we're also paying Aaron's Excavating for the foundation work at the Conservation Administration Building, forty-four thousand, twenty-five dollars. And I think those are all the larger or unusual payments today. Everything is in order. Any questions for me today?
Alright, we've got a motion and a second. Roll call please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Grant.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Kurt and Buck.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Item five, received project updates from department heads.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nickless, Engineer. This is on Monday. We did close Canfield Road. We are, our contractor from last year had a carryover, carried over the work. Some bridge deck repairs to the road, excuse me, to the bridge on Canfield Road. We did close that on Monday, so there are quite a few roads closed in this portion of the county. I also wanted to make you aware of that we found out last week in Blackhawk County that we've been selected to submit an application for the Federal Competitive Highway Bridge Program. This is the federal grant program. Iowa is one of four states that's been selected to receive at least thirty-two million dollars, I believe it's fiscal year twenty-six. Four states that have low populations and a high, a high concentration of deficient bridges. So Iowa is one of the four. We've been selected to be part of an application to, for the state of Iowa bridges, county bridges in particular. I believe there are several D O T bridges as well that are being put together by a consultant in Des Moines. So we're submitting information to this consultant. The application is due to the feds in mid-August. And then we're hopeful that by the end of the year, the end of the calendar year, we'll have been, we will know. We're hopeful that we are one of the states selected. The bridge we submitted is a bridge on Eagle Road. It is in our five-year plan. Our estimated cost is one point one million dollars. We've been told that we will, we would be expected to pay about ten to fifteen percent of that with the remainder being paid by, by this federal grant. So I will keep you posted on that, and we're hopeful that we, Iowa will get selected for the grant. We do have, Iowa does have a good track record of receiving these grants, so we are very hopeful that this gets selected. Can I answer any questions?
Kathy, if we get that grant, will that help move up another bridge into the schedule?
Yeah, most definitely. This one was programmed, I believe, in twenty-seven or twenty-eight. And, you know, we're always, we always have plenty of bridges in line that we can move up to this place.
Good morning, Board. Brian Williams, Blackhawk County Attorney. I'm happy to announce that in about fifteen minutes, we're gonna have Heather Jackson Briggs sworn in as a first assistant. Second first assistant we have. This is a budgeted position that we have. Heather joined us back in late of twenty twenty-one. Has been a wonderful prosecutor for us. She did come, come to us from the defense side, so she has a good perspective on things. I want to do, start off by thanking both Michelle and Amanda for their help on this. This was kind of a thinking outside the box, at least primarily on the vacancies and what Heather has contributed up to this point, so. Ultimately, I will say that with the last three years, I'm biased, but I doubt very few have done more for abused children in the state of Iowa than Heather has. So just wanted to advise the board that that's our plan moving forward. And if Heather wants to say anything, I'll give her that opportunity, but I just wanted to kind of give the board a heads up. And I think most of you knew already, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
You mentioned Brian about having to be sworn in. Is that gonna be coming up? Is that scheduled yet?
It's nine thirty.
Okay.
Nine thirty. We'll do it upstairs.
Okay. You're doing it here or?
I think we're gonna do it upstairs in the courtroom, I think.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just want to thank everybody for the opportunity. I never really expected my career to go in this direction. I started as a defense attorney. But given the opportunity to become a prosecutor, it is absolutely the most rewarding legal experience that I've had in my career. And I am very privileged to have been given the opportunity to prosecute sex abuse and crimes against children. So I'm happy to continue to contribute to our community as much as I can. And thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Heather. Glad you're on our side.
Happy to be here.
Good morning, Board. Manifesto Mayor, H R Director. Just a couple things. Cherry Gelmeyer of our office and I will be in Portland next week attending the annual conference for N P A R A. And so Anna will be in the office assisting covering office operations. However, I do plan on her attending the upcoming strategic planning Blackhawk County Leadership University courses that are both Thurs, no, Tuesday and Thursday next week. So we'll communicate to offices and to staff that need to connect with H R during one to four on Tuesday or Thursday next week to email Anna. But the physical office will be unavailable during those times. I will also present to the board when we come back from Portland, I have a couple items for agenda discussions regarding the deferred compensation plan that we have, which is a voluntary plan, not anything that costs the employer. But it is a four fifty-seven B deferred compensation plan, and I have a few updates with regard to fiduciary services, a new pro-plan, a pro-account plan option for participants, as well as looking at the Deferred Compensation Committee. Right now, it's just myself and Cherry. All other individuals on that committee have either retired, resigned. So we need to get a few new members, like perhaps a finance director would be great to have you on there. And as well as another individual from the auditor's office. Not a lot of work with this committee, really more just keeping in compliance with I R S rules and regulations with regard to retirement funds and things like that. But deferred compensation here is just entirely voluntary of the employee participating. It's not really anything that the county, I guess, provides any match or anything like that. But we do have some responsibilities just because we have the eligibility to have a four fifty-seven B plan. And then the other thing I wanted to mention for possibly when I return, or it could happen next week, but we did have policy review meeting last week on June eleventh, and there were a few policies that were recommended for approval for either changes or just that we have reviewed them. One is the autopsy transportation fees policy. We had also reviewed the change order policy. We're still requiring, requesting a bit more research on that one. And then we also reviewed the tax sale acquired properties policies and procedure. And that is recommended for approval, but no changes. The other policy that came up is a new, or an update to the bidding local preference amendment. I believe policy review passed it along for the board to have a work session on that policy. So just want to give you a brief update that most things that you'll be back seeing us from H R or policy review will be July first or forward. Any questions about any of the topics or things? Thank you very much.
Alright, any department heads elected online? Seeing none. Alright, let's move on to item six, Minutes of Approval for the June tenth meeting.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Hearing will be at nine oh five, bid opening for the proposed purchase of single taxi dump truck for F Y twenty-six. Item eight is the content agenda. Items listed will be out of a single resolution without separate discussion unless someone from the board or the public requests that a specific item be considered separately.
So moved.
Second. Motion second. Roll call please.
Grant.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Kurt and Buck.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item nine, Contract and Agreements. Resolution of the lowest responsible bid received from Laptop Services, Humble, Iowa for Project L seven five two six Seal Coating in various locations of Blackhawk County with a total bid of one hundred thirteen thousand, eight dollars and sixty-one cents with the engineer's, engineer's estimate of one hundred sixteen thousand, seven hundred forty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents. Be awarded and directed chair to sign resolution authorizing the county engineer to sign the contract and to receive a place on filed contract with bond and certificate of insurance as recommended by Catherine Nickless, county engineer. So moved.
Second.
As you know, Board, we did open the bids in here in the boardroom, and Blacktop Services was the little bid. They've done a lot of work for us doing the same type of work. I would recommend that we be allowed to award contract to Blacktop Services and utilize their services this year. Can I answer any questions?
I'm just curious one thing. I'm sure you already covered it. How long is that, like the lifespan of that seal coating?
We typically three to five years. It's not really meant to be a structural, provide much, much structure to the roadway. It seals up the roadway. We've used it while we have approximately thirty-six miles of seal code in the county, and we are rotating now on a four to five-year cycle depending on traffic volume. So it's not a very long-lasting product, but it is widely used throughout Iowa, throughout the nation.
Gotcha. How was this, Chris? Thanks, Gaby.
This is a resolution. Roll call please.
Leyland.
Yes.
Kurt and Buck.
Yes.
Frina.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item ten A, Resolution to Approve Change Order Number One. Final for the Cedar Valley Nature Trail Division Two paving contract with Aspro Inc. in value eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred sixty-one dollars and fifty-six cents. As determined through quantity verification by the project engineer and utilizing American Rescue Plan Funds, Change Order Number One, final, will increase the current contract amount from six hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred nineteen dollars, fifteen cents to seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-one cents. The same has been approved by the Conservation Board and recommended for approval by the Board of Supervisors. So moved. We've got a motion and a second.
We just happened to have, I'm sorry. First.
Alright.
I didn't catch who said.
I don't wish to, I think we both moved, but yeah, whatever. Is Mike on?
I'm here if there's any questions. Sure. Conservation.
Yeah, I was just curious what happened. You know what happened that went up? That much from the original?
Yeah, there was, in the original contract, they paid, they did an overlay paving to McKellar Road. And then there was an intersection repair at Whedon Road, and it was just over a quarter of a mile. So we felt like overlaying to Whedon Road gave us a good break in the surfacing. And then also there was an error in the engineering in the shouldering. They forgot to multiply by two sides of the trail. So they figured it for one side of the trail. For shoulder.
Yeah, 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 yeah. The engineering on their end, maybe made a mistake?
The engineering for the quantities.
Okay.
It's our engineer that we have.
Okay, okay. When, like, how long ago did they do that? I'm not picking apart, I'm just, I'm just curious. Like, when, when they initially did the engineering for it?
This contract, this contract was signed in July of twenty-four.
Okay. So I had, thank you.
So I've got a question actually for this item, that's one. Little over a hundred thousand in change orders from American Rescue Funds. We're still, we, do we have some other savings in other court shares or balances, or?
The original budget for the Cedar Valley Nature Trail was five million. I think even with these, they're gonna come in at about four point six or four point seven million, so they're well worth it.
And with this change order, this project still is below the other bid that we received for the project.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, we had a motion and a second. Roll call please on item ten A.
Grant.
Yes.
Kurt and Buck.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Item ten B, Resolution to Accept Division Two Bid Package Two Paving Project for the Cedar Valley Nature Trail is substantially complete and authorized pay at number six, final, contained in the project, containage of thirty-six thousand, eight hundred forty-nine dollars and forty-four cents be paid to Aspro Inc. Thirty days from now, utilizing the American Rescue Plan Funds. The same has been approved by the Conservation Board and recommended for approval by the Board of Supervisors. So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Grant.
Yes.
Kurt and Buck.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item ten C, Motion that the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by L U I T Director be approved. Direct the chair to sign for same to purchase one fiber network switch in the amount of fifteen thousand, fifty-five dollars and eighty-six cents from Heartland Business Systems from Warren, Iowa.
Good morning, Board. L U I T Director. So as we implement more infrastructure, make different plans and changes, it does create bottleneck. We knew we'll eventually create bottlenecks in our network. So this is to address those bottlenecks. It kind of sits at the core of it. Think of it as air traffic control. And it helps move the traffic in the most efficient way possible. Can I answer any questions?
So moved. Second. Air traffic control is good.
That's the most comforting.
Yeah.
Sorry. That's why we're upgrading.
Alright, this is a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item ten D, Motion of the Quote for Urban Services LLC for repairs of Washburg, sure the agreement in the amount of. sure agree with an amount of three thousand, one hundred eighty-one dollars be approved at times by this chair, submitted by Michelle B, the finance director. So moved.
Second. This is just, over time, things erode, and occasionally they get rodents that get in there. So they would want to clear all that.
All right, so motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries again. Item ten E, motion that the travel request be approved and direct the chair to sign for same estimated costs of eight hundred sixty dollars for Richie Curtinback to attend the twenty-twenty-five ISAP annual conference in Des Moines, Iowa, scheduled August twentieth and twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You can vote on your own.
I feel like we changed our mind.
Yes. Oh, that case. Item ten F, hearing and bid opening proposed purchase of one single axle dump truck for fiscal year twenty-six. Do we have a motion to receive and place on file, due to the occasion of May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, when we receive the order? So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a motion to close the hearing after oral written party access. So moved.
Second.
I was a little older, I learned from my school to just cool it until it's, these are absolutely red and, you know, getting anxious. Are they ready?
That's what I was waiting for.
The reddens?
No.
No red.
I said we'll get a surprise one of these days.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, first bid comes from?
Are we gonna vote on the, sorry, are we gonna vote on the question?
Do we need to, do we need to close it before she reads?
I believe we should, yes.
Wasn't that the issue last week, is that we closed it before she read?
No, that wasn't the issue last week. The issue last week was unrelated, we resolved it. This is a joke, I believe.
Yeah, yeah, I know, okay.
We have a motion.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second. We just haven't voted on it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. All in favor of closing, are they ready?
Aye.
All right. All right. It carries. Now, bids and receipts.
First bid comes from Don's Truck Sales Incorporated slash Warrior Trucks, Fairbank, Iowa. Their bid is two hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred, three dollars. Two, three, five, comma, nine, zero, three, point, zero, zero. The second bid comes from Midwest Peterbilt Group, Ankeny, Iowa. Their bid is one hundred forty thousand, fifty-one dollars. One, four, zero, comma, zero, five, one, point, zero, zero. Okay, that's from Midwest Peterbilt Group. And they, the second portion of their bid is from Don's Truck Sales. I would think this is concerning the snow equipment. The first portion is the chassis, is a Peterbilt chassis. The second portion of their bid is the snow equipment that is one hundred thirty-two thousand, twelve dollars. One hundred thirty-two, excuse me, one, three, two, comma, zero, one, two, point, zero, zero.
And where are they located?
Don's is in Fairbank.
The Midwest Peterbilt?
The Midwest Peterbilt Group is in Ankeny, Iowa. Okay, the third bid comes from Truck Centers Companies, Outrun Heights, two hundred thirty-eight thousand, three hundred nine, three hundred ninety-seven dollars. Two, three, eight, comma, three, nine, seven, point, zero, zero. Those are like three bids.
Thank you. How about RFP? Is that low bid or is it lowest responsible?
Lowest responsible bid is what we normally state.
Thank you. If you have a motion at the board, supervisor reviews and place on file. The bid will allow time to review said bids as recommended by Kathy. Kathy Mickelis?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item eleven, any report of information from the board? Just to remind everyone again, the town hall's coming up on understanding property assessments. Coming up on Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, the Public Library, and Wednesday, June twenty-fifth, Cedar Falls Library. It is on the county website, and I think Kathy's cleared on the Facebook page as well for signing up. I had some questions last night, been attended a couple of city council meetings, and one more question's on the exemptions that will be covered at that as well. And who all is eligible for these new exemptions, so that's gonna be a big part of the presentation.
Can you have some else virtually, or is it just in person?
Just in person at this point.
Would there be an option to, to do a camera setup so people could?
Facebook Live.
We've been wondering about doing that. We're gonna be meeting, Gabby and TJ and I will be meeting here tomorrow. Sometime during next week, prepare, and we'll ask that question. We can maybe record it, so we can post it on the page as well for more information. Let's see what we can do on that.
Like that, just go live too.
Uh, next week, do we need to take any additional action for community? The agencies to front?
Yes, we've been, been working on our business to the application. It's hoping to have him today, but we didn't quite get there. So hopefully next week, we will present you and give us more feedback
Yeah.
about what you'd like, the application and the evaluation would look like.
Item twelve, we have a reservation that pursuant to the provision of the Iowa Open Meetings Law by the authority of the Code of Iowa, subsection twenty-one point five, one J, the Blackhawk County Department of Supervisors shall proceed in a closed session for the purpose of discussing the purchase of particular real estate only where a premature disclosure would be reasonably expected to increase the price of the governmental body who would have to pay for that property. The minutes and the taped recording of a session closed under this paragraph shall be available for public examination when the transaction discussion discussed. So moved.
Second.
Resolution, roll call please.
Brandt?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Curtinback?
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. As the, when you do all that stuff, do a quick little recess. All right. Do we have a motion to, Board of Supervisors' meeting in closed session be adjourned? So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do you have a motion to adjourn today's meeting? So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That's because of closing of the closed session, as I'm paid for overtime too, so it's just like.